No reason, okay. In that case, in that case, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting in Manatee Springs City Council for June the 16th, 2020. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand and join me in the pledge. Judy, can we display an American flag or? Okay, we can all envision one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm sorry, Judy, maybe I should have waited longer there. My apologies. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes. You have council members Judith Chandler.
Present.
Counselor Steve Burner.
Here.
Counselor John Shada.
Here.
Counselor Julie Wolf. Counselor Susan Wolbrook. Mayor Protem Nancy Fortune.
Present.
And Mayor John Graham.
Present. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is approval of the agenda. We have a motion. Counselor Chandler has her hand up.
I wanted to move that we amend the agenda tonight. And I would like to move item L, executive session, up to after G1 hearings. And in executive session, I would like us to address number two first. If there is in fact a number one to discuss tonight, I wasn't sure if there was or not. For two reasons, one, it's a long meeting and this is really important and I want to address this while it's still very, while we're very fresh and we're not exhausted. And two, there's a potential that possibly our sessions and executive session may, may change the new business H1 table.
May I address that, Mayor?
Mr. Parker, yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. So I had asked your clerk to leave the executive session L1 on the agenda. Just in case your city administrator had decided that she wanted to have this an executive session, but under the law, she's requested that it be done in public. So L1 actually will not be an item on the agenda. I just left it on there in case she had changed her mind, but she has requested the discussion in public.
Thank you.
I understand. I believe Counselor Wolbrook had her hand up next.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the following amendment, that we remove item H1 under new business.
We have two motions. Do we have a second? I will second Counselor Wolbrook's motion.
Well, we had a first motion, which was mine on the table, and I think we need to vote on that before we vote on H1.
A second on that.
Counselor Wolf? You're muted, Julie.
Hi, I wanted to see if I could make a friendly amendment to Judith's motion, which is to amend the agenda so that immediately after G1, we proceed to L2. Just changing up the order. Would that be acceptable since L1 is no longer an issue?
Yes.
In that case, I would second the motion.
Counselor Wolbrook? You're muted.
Susan.
Sorry, thank you. Some discussion on executive sessions. It's really hard from my experience in the first two years and also through my council training to do executive sessions, ask the public to leave the meeting and ask the public to come back. They tend to lose interest and don't come back for the remaining items on the agenda. So I don't think it's good practice to do that. And that's my discussion point on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we we have a motion to amend the agenda such that, as I understand it, following item G1, we would proceed to L2 and L1 has been removed. Is that correct, Counselor Chandler?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Discussion, Mayor Protem Fortune.
Yeah, I would just concur with Susan. Denise has specifically asked that her section be done in public. And the public is unlikely to, they won't know when our executive session is over and it's unlikely that they'll come back. So I think it's unfair and inappropriate to switch those two items.
I would agree with that. I would echo Mayor Protem Fortune and Counselor Wolbrook's opinions on that.
I'd like to call the question and vote.
Okay, so all in favor of Counselor Chandler's motion to go from on the agenda, to amend the agenda so that we go from item G1 directly to L2, which is the executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have five.
Told by the ayes or do you want us to raise our hand?
Well, yeah, hold your hands up again, please. Okay, so, okay, so we have four. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, so the motion passes four to three. So we will, the agenda will be, when we get to, we'll follow from G1, then we'll go into the executive session. Okay. All right, next item is public comment on non-agenda items.
Can I say one more thing? Did Julie want to follow through on her amendment or Susan to? We still need to approve the agenda and Susan had asked that the hearing be taken off, I believe.
That is correct. I'm not sure what the procedure is, so I'm open to some advice on that procedure.
Okay, and I would just say that on that, Susan, that notice has been given and, you know, a lot of, for second hearing, the date was specifically set. I'm a little uncomfortable at taking that off.
What I said was H1.
H1.
Oh, H1, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I'm sorry, perhaps I got that wrong. I misunderstood. I did say G1 and it should have been H1.
Yeah, H1 is the one that I asked to have removed.
H1 is the consideration of city administrative job performance. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Shada, see, raise your hand. Is that a second?
Yes, I want to answer Susan a question. Susan, do you want to postpone that indefinitely or do you want to postpone that to a date certain?
This was not, it was not something that council agreed to by a vote to do. It started as an executive session and then Denise asked for it to be a public meeting, but we did not have a vote on that. And if the mayor put this on the agenda, that's fine. We can still vote whether or not we want it to be on the agenda or not. So my reason is, and if for some reason it were to be removed from this agenda, it could be brought up the next time we have a discussion about future agendas. We now hold a place in our meetings for that. But I am simply asking that it be removed, that is new business H1 from this agenda. We did not vote last week in an executive session, in a work session, to put this on the agenda as an executive session. There were one or two people who mentioned a desire to have it, but there was not consensus or any type of action to do that.
So, and you just want to have item H1 just essentially just removed or we're not moving it to another day, right?
Yes, we would put this agenda and then the procedure is, is that we discuss future agenda items at another time when that shows up on the agenda. And if that is something that people want to vote on at that time, then I think they can. If people are here for this meeting and they're here specifically tonight for item H1 and this gets removed from the agenda, they'll still have an opportunity to make comment during public comment on non-agenda items. So it doesn't take away the public's ability to weigh in on this tonight. If you were here for this, you simply say the next part of our agenda is item E, public comment on non-agenda items.
Counselor Wolf? You're muted. Julie, you're muted.
Sorry, I kept muting myself because I was getting all this feedback. I'm confused. Is item H1 the same thing as city administrators' request for public, for the, what was previously the personnel matter to be handled in public or is that something different? I can't tell.
So H1 is the consideration of the city administrator's job performance and that it had initially been thought to be an executive session. She requested it to be made a public session.
Okay, so basically then, H1 is what I1 used to be and she wants it to be public. And Susan is proposing that it be postponed indefinitely? Do I have that right?
Be postponed at least for tonight. It could be, it could go back through the normal agenda creation process. One of the problems with this is that typically the way, there are two ways for an item to get on the agenda. One is we, as a council, four or more counselors vote to put it on the agenda or I put it on the agenda. And in this case, neither happened. It got to be kind of a fluke. There were a number of strange circumstances that happened last week and the perfect storm that resulted from that enabled this to get on the agenda and it really would not, in going through our normal procedure, it would not be on the agenda. And we do have quite an extensive agenda tonight. I see Counselor Chandler has her hand up.
If this has not received a second, I'd like to second this motion.
Okay, it is seconded. Do we have any further discussion then? Okay, so the motion is to remove item H1, consideration of city administrator job performance from the, from tonight's agenda.
May I ask a question before you call the question, before we vote?
Go ahead, Counselor Wolf.
So it sounds like if I understand Susan's motion, it's removing H1 only part of H1. You still want the public comment on H1, but you don't want council comment H1 or no public, or the whole thing goes away?
The whole thing, the whole thing goes away for tonight.
Excuse me, other than the people who may have showed up for this meeting because this was on the agenda, if they still want to make a comment, they can do so through item E, public comment on non-agenda items because we're removing it from this agenda.
Yeah, that would follow, so, you know, so that would, we would know that that, if that in fact happens, then it would be off the agenda so they would be able to come in under that section, section, item E. So, you know, we have motion by Counselor Wolbrook, seconded by Counselor Chandler to remove item H1 from tonight's agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, passes, motion passes unanimously. Item H1 is removed from tonight's agenda. Okay, thank you. So for the benefit of the audience, if you wanted to, if you were here to make comments on behalf of or relative to the performance matters of city administrator Denise Howell, would be able to do that now under item E, public comment on non-agenda items. And in fact, that is where we're at in the agenda. So we will now hear public comment on non-agenda items. Counselor Wolf here.
Before we do that, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Oh. Excuse me, okay. Good point, thank you. That's a motion, second by Nancy Fortune. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, okay. It's always good to have something besides the Alzheimer's medicine out there to help me with my memory. Thank you. Okay, public comment on non-agenda items. City clerk, if we have anyone that would like to speak?
At this time, we do have two hands that are up, so our first is Tim Haas. And let me go ahead and bring him over. Okay. Tim, you should be coming on the live here. You'll need to unmute yourself and turn your video on. Very good.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I can.
Well, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak for a moment. That was very confusing on the agenda, but I think I understand. We get to talk now and we'll figure this out down the road a little bit. I'll be brief. I just wanted, first of all, to make sure that you all did receive the email that I sent yesterday on behalf of Denise. If so, and if you had the opportunity to read it, I'll, I'll try to be brief. What I would like to say is that I have been impressed with Denise from the beginning. I happened to be at the interviews for the city administrator position last year and immediately I could tell that she was the type of person that Manitou needed. Since then, I have witnessed her lead by example and do, in my opinion, an outstanding job. Clearly, you all agree because less than a couple of weeks ago, you voted unanimously to give her a raise. What has happened since then, I am frankly a little confused about, but as I understand it, there are two main points. The first one is a press release regarding the potential opening of the incline. And I read the press release and there's not much to it other than the fact that there would be a discussion at the city council work session. The second was, as I understand it, some frustration regarding the timing of the distribution of the PowerPoint project by the city of Colorado Springs. And at least as I see that, I don't believe Denise probably had any influence on whether or when the city of Colorado Springs decided to release that PowerPoint. So to be honest with you, this seems like a tremendous waste of time in a very, very scary time with plenty of issues. This seems like an absolute overreaction and it's frustrating to me and to the dozen other people that I spoke to about this. I will tell you that I have worked with probably very close to a dozen city administrators over the years with the city of Manitou Springs. You are extremely fortunate, in my opinion, to have the best one in all of those years on your staff right now. Not only has Denise done an excellent job, she has helped to assemble a fantastic supporting crew with Roy, with the new police chief, with Christine in the planning department. I honestly have more confidence in our city administration than I have had in 30 years. So rocking that boat now seems extremely short sighted. Denise has done a great job with community outreach, with the businesses, with the school district. And it seems as though really for the first time, many of these organizations are speaking with one voice. I would hate for us to take a step backwards. It seems like a majority of this has to do with the incline and the management of it. My suggestion would be, well, first of all, the incline has been a mess for a long, long time. If you want to evaluate the management of the incline, I would recommend you go back a whole lot further than Denise in the last couple of months.
Mr. Haas, thank you, if that's okay. We try to limit comments to about three minutes and we're a little over that. If you have any quick last comment, go ahead, but.
You know, I have just one last.
Okay.
And that is that, you know, it's city council's responsibility to dictate policy and not micromanage. Have some faith in the fact that you've hired a capable and intelligent and a motivated woman for city administrator. I recommend you let her do her job and give her clear expectations and goals. But we need her frankly more than ever right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And neglected before Mr. Haas spoke to, to indicate that our policy is to, that the public comments should be three minutes or less and we would, in the interest of giving people a chance, that would be good. Also, we typically don't respond to comments. We'll say, thank you for your participation, but we typically would not respond directly tonight. Very good, thank you. City clerk?
The other thing we need to remind our speakers that public comment is we need their address stated.
Okay, right. Mr. Haas, could you give us your, your address? Your residential address?
Residential address is 3905 Greenside Point, Colorado Springs, 80904.
Thank you. Okay. Judy, someone else?
Okay, our next one is Ted Johnston.
Okay, Mr. Johnston.
He should be coming over. Mr. Johnston, you'll need to unmute yourself and turn your video on, please, and then state your address.
All right, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Hang on here. Okay. Good evening, my name is Ted Johnston and my residential address is 1903 West Kuchar Street. That's in Colorado Springs, 80904. I'm also the assistant general manager for the Pike's Peak Cog Railway at 515 Roxton Avenue in Manitou Springs. I came here tonight just to speak and supported city administrator Howell. I've been here just a little over two years, went through three interim city administrators just in that short time. And I just want to say that since Denise was made city administrator last year, she has solidified the staff at city hall and projects that in the two years I've been here that I just saw continually kicked down the road by the revolving door of city interim administrators, just basically because it seemed they didn't want to deal with it, are finally moving ahead. You can see this in the fiber work that's going on on Manitou Avenue right now. The MAPS project, which is about to get underway. It just finally feels like Manitou has some solid direction and a solid city administrator to keep the city moving forward in a positive direction. During this crazy time of COVID-19, you know, the city's budget is going to need to be restructured and I think Denise has already well underway with that from some of the other council meetings I've listened in on. There's projects that are going to have to be reevaluated and there's other tough decisions we don't even know about right now that are going to arise out of this situation where we need a strong leader who's willing to make those decisions and move the city in the right direction. And lastly, the last thing I'll say is I think Denise is finally balancing the needs of residents and businesses, something that is no easy task in Manitou. But she's done a phenomenal job and we look forward to continuing to work with her as, as we move forward as well.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. City clerk, our next person?
Yes, so our next person is Gregory Trible. And he should be coming over here.
All right, I'm muting. Can you guys see me? Yes. Picture of me and an animal here. Can I turn my camera on, start video? Okay, this is me. All right, my name is Greg Trible. I'm at 12 Mini Haha in Manitou Springs. I was, I teach at the middle school. I teach sixth grade science at the middle school and I was, ended up in a conversation with one of my students' parents and they recommended that I do this, so I'm doing this. So feel free to stop me if I'm in the wrong place at the wrong time doing the wrong thing. Let me send you guys an email. So August 26th last year, I came home from school and and met the, there's a guy working on the solar panels on our roof and I came in and our whole basement was flooded with sewage. The gentleman that was, that was inspecting the solar panels said that he had seen them working above my house and below my house on the sewer line. And it was, the whole basement, everything there was messed up and like two to three inches of raw sewage. I called the city and they said to that they had people out here working on it to file a claim with the city and they would reimburse me for my losses there. I've got a spare bedroom down there and a laundry room and a storage room that were both full of stuff for guests and family when they come to town and that sort of thing. So I sent you guys an email with the claim and basically photos of the damage and it's an Amazon shopping cart full of most of the things that were damaged and ruined. It came up to about around $2,000 of damages. Waited and waited and went back and forth and back and forth with the city and basically, basically they told me that they're not going to cover it. And first they said there was no one out there working on stuff that day. Then they said there was people out there working on stuff that day. Anyways, it's gone back and back and forth and back and forth. And I was just going to see if there's any way that you guys have the control to make that right or what I should do there.
Mr. Trouble, I think our sense of it is if we could ask city administrator Denise Howell to review the, review the matter, okay, and give her a chance to take a look at that? Would that sound like a reasonable first step?
Fantastic, yes.
Okay, all right. So if you, I believe you gave us your address and so forth in the email, so we do have your contact information. Okay, we understand that's got to be kind of frustrating, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get it figured out. Thank you though. Thanks for what you guys do. So that you got a long night.
Okay, all right, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Judy, do we have anyone else?
We do, Mayor. We have our next one. The name that shows up is called the Manitou Strings.
Manitou Strings. We'd like to have a person's name and address to go with that. Spencer Ren.
Yes, I apologize. Bluegrass group that I've been together for a few years. I would have done a better job of changing my name. But anyway, thanks so much. I would, first of all, I want to thank city council.
Can we get your address?
Oh, yes, of course. I'm at 320 Crystal Hills Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Here in Manitou Springs, Manitou Springs, and have been here since 1988. Love the city. But anyway, so back to, I wanted to thank everyone on council for for the time and effort that you all spend. I know it's not just a once a month or once a week thing. It's a constant thing that you got time and effort you spent and I certainly appreciate it. I did want to say that both myself and my wife Miley Gray, who's, we've been together for 40 years. We both fully support and really appreciate the incredible job that I feel that we feel Denise Howell has done in her short term as a city administrator. I, in addition to to Tim Haas and many other people, were on that original search committee for a city administrator. I don't know if anyone remembers that, but we picked somebody, they turned us down. The second person turns out was a long, hard search and we had some excellent candidates and they kept on turning us down. We were really lucky to have somebody of Denise's character and quality as the city administrator. We've had many excellent people in many positions over the years. So I don't want to single out anybody, but I think that the team that Denise has, has put together is especially strong. So I don't want to single out anybody, but I think that the team that Denise has put together is especially strong. I think Tim mentioned that. That's, that's one of the great things she's done. She's obviously a great recruiter and inspires confidence in her team. I finally just want to say I suggest that we have met so many, so many challenges facing us in the future here with COVID-19. Our economy is being decimated, that we really need to come together, show unity and help solve these problems. And I know that we're going to have differences, but make sure that we, we do the best thing for Manitou and move forward. And again, we support Denise and we support everything she's done and her people that she is instrumental in hiring. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. City clerk?
We have another hand up and that's.
Okay.
All right, so my name is Jay Roar. I live at 208 Roxton Avenue. And I just wanted to talk about Denise for a minute. It was, it was a very long and difficult search. But we found somebody who is an exemplary city administrator. But beyond that, she is a fantastic manager. She's been able to put together a team that's causing every single department to be better than I would say it's ever been since I've lived in Manitou. And while you might have a disagreement here or there to request a, a executive session to rebuke her seems fairly excessive. And I just wanted to say that her demeanor and her customer service are fantastic. And this town is doing better than it's ever done in that respect. And I wish you guys have a great night. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Good. Judy?
I'm just going to check real quick. At this point, it's like we don't have any other hands that are up.
Okay, all righty. So that concludes the public comment on non-agenda items. Next item is the consent calendar. We have a roster of six items. I will read them quickly. One, presentation of warrants written from March 1st through May 31st, 2020. Second is resolution number 2420, a resolution appointing a council member and city staff person as liaisons to the Manitou Arts, Culture and Heritage Match Board. Three, consideration of resolution number 2520, resolution approving the expenditure of CARES Act funding to be administered by the Manitou Springs Chamber of Commerce for a small business grant program and to enhance business patron experience. Four, approval of the May 5th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Five, approval of the May 19, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Six, resolution number 2320, a resolution in support of Bike Month and outdoor recreation in response to COVID-19 and Bike Month in June. Those are the six items we have on the consent calendar. Entertained a motion? Mayor Protam?
Before we have a motion, I would like to pull the May 19th minutes for several reasons. There was sorry. Paragraph two, there was a couple of abstentions and I think we should put why there are abstentions. I think in both cases it was technical difficulties. Paragraph H, it was, I think we need to spell out the Western Avenue Action Plan. And most importantly, on paragraph L, we did in fact vote to approve a salary increase for our city administrator and that was not included in the minutes at all. So I think there's substantial corrections that need to be made before we approve those minutes.
Okay, so, Council Wolf? You're muted, Julie. There you are. Second, okay. So we have a motion, a second, to approve the consent calendar with the removal of item five, the approval of the May 19, 2020 meeting minutes. Thus giving us a chance to clean those minutes up for a future consideration. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, next item hearing, this is second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1020 in ordinance of the city of Manitou Springs, Colorado, imposing a temporary six-month moratorium on the acceptance of applications for vacation rentals. It's my understanding that the city planning department will speak to this initially. Do we have Christine out there?
Coming over right now.
Great, thank you.
And Christine, are we, is Michelle going to be on this as well?
No, this will be just me.
Right. Christine, then you have the floor, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight, this particular agenda item is to serve as the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1020. This is an ordinance of the city imposing a temporary six-month moratorium on the acceptance of applications for vacation rentals. As we recall that we've done some background research and had discussion about short-term rentals and what the status is of that in the city. Staff has been directed to continue doing their research and public engagement. Between the last first reading and this reading, we have had two new short-term rental applications submitted. So they were, they did arrive in the office before our cutoff for tonight and for the next planning commission. So those two will be reviewed and potentially going on to planning commission.
Okay.
Right. I make one comment, Mayor.
Parker, please.
Just as a note, the, the six-month moratorium, if it goes into effect, it'll go into effect five days after application. So it actually should last a little longer than December 2nd. December 2nd would have been your first reading, six months from your first reading date. Just being technical here, but you could also extend the last date on section one of your ordinance to be potentially December 16th versus December 2nd. I literally just noticed that now, so I thought I'd mention it.
Good point. Thank you. It's good to be observing. Counselor Wolf?
Yeah, I wasn't able to hear what Christine said about she got two new somethings and then my audio blipped out. Can you tell me what we're talking about, what two new what?
Christine, did you hear Counselor Wolf's comment?
I did, yes, yes. I'm so sorry you didn't. Yes, I'm so sorry you didn't hear that. So between the first reading and then last Friday, we received two new short-term rental applications. So those were received in time to potentially be on the next planning commission meeting. So as a matter of information, Michelle and I both thought it was important to inform council that there were two new applications. Because in our last meeting, I had said that there wasn't any in the pipeline, which we didn't know about. So because there's a moratorium about to be placed, several individuals were able to put their packages together and get them in.
Thank you.
You bet.
This is a public hearing, so I will now open up the public comment portion of the meeting. City clerk, do we have individuals wishing to speak to this?
Well, so far, if anyone is interested in speaking, please use the raise hand tool. Do not see any hands that are raised in the audience. Maybe you want to give them a second to find the tool if they need to.
Let's give them, yeah. So if you're in the audience and you wish to speak to the, to the ordinance on the short-term rental, six-month moratorium, please, please use the tool to raise your hand.
Okay, still no hands raised.
No hand raised. Okay, in that case, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Counsel, any discussion? Counselor Chandler? Oops, you're muted. Judith, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that we approve bill 3220, ordinance 1020, confirming an ordinance of the city of Manitou Springs imposing a temporary six-month moratorium on the acceptance of applications for vacation rentals, with the exception of the two that came under the, under the deadline.
Do you want to also put in there the change in the date, the ending date?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Protam, and extending the date to December 16th.
Okay, motion, do we have a second? Julie Wolf, we have a second from Julie. Good, okay. Any further discussion, counsel? There'd be no further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that was item G1. H1 has been removed. And we are to move to item L2, that's the executive session item discussion of the incline. Do I have that correct? I think I do, but.
No, we, we have act on council correspondence, future agenda and city administrator report.
Okay, then maybe I need a little bit of guidance. My, my understanding was that we're moving from G1 directly to L2.
And that was my understanding also.
That was the initial motion that was voted on and approved.
Okay, so my understanding of that would be that we then go into an executive session. When we come out, we would still have the council correspondence, future agendas in the city administrator's report.
Yeah, I misunderstood the intent.
It's, okay. All righty, in this, in that case, we need to move to executive session. City clerk, do you want us to take maybe a five-minute break while you switch over accordingly?
If you could make a motion in a second and then vote, that would be appreciated. And the motion should read out the entire language if you would. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, then the next item, then I will read it out. An executive session, this is identified in the agenda as L2. An executive session to hold a conference with the city attorney for legal advice pursuant to section 5.1c of the Manitou Springs City Charter and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategy for negotiations and instruct negotiators concerning the closure of the Manitou Incline and enforcement-related matters. Counselor Wolf?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to L2. Do I have to repeat everything Jeff that he just said?
You can just say as the mayor just described.
As the mayor just said.
Second.
We have motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now go into executive session.
Mayor, would you like to clarify who on staff will be going into the executive session?
Yes, we would certainly need. Counselor Wolf?
I'd like to move that Denise be included and Roy be included in the executive session. Well, I thought that was automatic, but of course, yes, he's our leader.
No, Brian, the police chief, because we're talking about enforcement?
No, I don't want Brian. That's not my motion.
Okay.
What about Dole?
Yeah, I was going to ask, how about Dole Grabnick?
If Dole is available, then I would suggest Dole, Roy and Denise all participate.
Dole is available.
So that would be, then I'll take that as a friendly amendment to my motion.
So then we would have city council, Dole, Roy, Denise and Jeff Parker. Is that correct? But not the police chief?
No.
Okay. And that was.
Did we have a second?
That was a motion. There was a motion. Do we have a second to that? Mr. Shada, you're the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Wilbrook?
Yeah, can we just clarify why we think the chief would not be involved in negotiations going forward with what we decide to do about the future of the incline? Since the emergency order includes, it applies to the incline at this point and enforcement of that falls to him. And so I just am curious, I need an explanation as to why you're trying to exclude him from this.
Counselor Wolf?
May I respond?
Yes, go ahead and respond.
My, you know, my reasoning is that it's my understanding we're going forward here to figure out where we want to go from here in terms of the incline. It's pretty clear that the police have never, ever issued so much as even a warning to anybody and I don't expect that to change. So that's really not what's on the agenda in terms of my expectation of the agenda. My expectation of the agenda is to figure out where we go from here. So I just didn't think it was relevant. But if, I mean, we could have, we could invite Public Works because they might be involved with something. And we could invite planning because they're in charge of the CUP. And we could maybe find a reason to even invite Becca. But I'm just trying to stay focused on the issues that I think are, that we promised Karen that we would get back to her as soon as possible about. So that was my reasoning, not to turn it into like, you know, a big party, a huge, you know. I just thought it was an unnecessary additional person. That's just my opinion.
Nancy had her hand, Nancy had her hand up. Do you want to go first?
Sure, I, I would like to include the police chief. I think that the assertion that no tickets or warnings have ever been issued is an assertion. I haven't heard definitively one way or the other. Maybe I've missed something on that. I think that it's, I think he's an important partner and, and player in all of this.
Okay, so, Counsel Wilbrook, you, I think, were next, so.
I'll defer to other counselors and wrap up at the end if that's agreeable.
Okay, that's agreeable. Counselor Chandler?
I agree that the chief of police is an important person to have in, in these discussions of the incline. And I would support him attending the executive session.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shada?
No comment.
Okay. Counselor Wilbrook?
So I guess at this point I have a question. We have a motion on the floor, right?
Right.
But, and so can we restate that motion?
Julie, would you like to restate that motion?
I move to go into executive session pursuant to L2 as read into the record by mayor and to invite, oh, that was already decided. I move to invite to the executive session Roy, Denise and Joel. And, oh, Jeff Parker.
Okay, and to be clear, not the police chief. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if he gets added, he gets added. That's the motion. That's the second, you know. I guess I'll call the question. Oh, it looks like John Shada has.
Mr. Shada?
I guess Julie, since there's some people that would like maybe input from the chief, would you consider a friendly amendment to include Chief Churchill?
Okay, if, I'll, I'll include that as a friendly amendment. We include Chief Churchill.
Okay, so we have the motion. And then let's see, the second was?
Me.
Do we have a second? You have John. Okay, so you accept that? Okay, good. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we can go into executive session with city council and those other five individuals. So Judy, could you provide a little guidance as to when you're going to be ready?
Okay, so I'm bringing over Dole and Brian. I would just ask, since I'm not in this, if somebody could reach out to me, contact me in some way so I can jump back on as soon as you come out of executive session, since we have quite a few other items to get through before it's adjourned. So unless Roy wants to handle that.
Judy, can you hear me okay? This is Dole.
Yes, Dole.
Okay, good. That works out great. I'm driving across Kansas.
Oh, my, okay. So if somebody can just let me know.
Judy, should we just text you when we're done?
Sure.
Okay.
Judy, just a quick question. Are you, are we going to be able to know that nobody else can join while we're doing this?
Well, Roy is going to manage the executive session portion. So what we're asking all of our attendees to do at this time is to go ahead. They'll have to log off or end, end their, leave the meeting. And then I'm going to pass controls to Roy and Roy will be the host at that point. And then if you, if you want me back on for the finish of the meeting, then somebody will need to let me know so I can get back in.
How will the public know that they can join back in?
Not sure.
Will they be able to try and call in once we're done? Will they be able to try and call in once we're done?
Um.
I'm just trying to understand that, that it's still gonna be a public meeting when we're done on.
I know, I know, I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure because I don't have anyone's email.
Can I make a suggestion?
Mr. Shada?
Uh, hey, Mayor John, this is Dole.
Dole, excuse me, okay.
Hey, uh, I have a suggestion for that. Perhaps once we are done, maybe we set a time in the future that says like in 15 minutes, at 8:15 the city council meeting will resume. And then I'm assuming that people would be checking the link periodically and if all of a sudden they saw a message that said the meeting would be resuming, maybe they could log in then.
Okay.
How much time do we have for the executive session? Do we have set right now?
We don't have any numbers set, any time set.
We, we don't have any specific time set, I think this.
Jeff, do you have a suggestion? Can we say eight o'clock or eight fifteen or eight thirty? And then if not, we take a break until that time?
Yeah, that's what I would be excited, I don't want to have a situation where the public has no ability to know when the public meeting is starting. I mean, I guess if we think it's going to be an hour, we could say eight o'clock, we'll resume. If it's going to be longer, we could say fifteen, whatever council thinks is reasonable. And then if, and then we can come back into public session at that point. Um, so the public could rejoin and then perhaps we could, if we need more time, we could always tell the public we're going back in for longer or we could do it after the public session, you know, do the executive session after the public session.
Okay. Well, Counselor Chandler? Did you?
No, I, I have no comment.
Okay, um, well, maybe what I might suggest is that we, uh, if we plan to, to rejoin in a public session at, uh, at eight fifteen, that would give us, uh, a little over an hour plus a 15-minute break or an hour, a little over an hour and 15 minutes, about an hour and 20 minutes or so. Um, that would, uh, if we could maybe get our work done in an hour, that's maybe optimistic. We could then take a, a break, um, we do it eight fifteen. Um, we, for that matter, we could do it at eight thirty, that would give us a little more time. Um, it's hard to read the tea leaves on this. Council, anybody have a thought on that?
I, I do have a question now. Uh, if we are not done in executive session because we aren't sure, um, and we set a time, then we're kind of constraining ourselves. So I guess, uh, if there's a way for us to alert the public, should we have to go longer in executive session, I'm okay with the resuming at eight thirty after a 15-minute break.
Jeff, if you, we go out of executive session, you can go back in after you finish everything else up, right?
Yeah, the other option would be just to break for the public session and then continue our executive session after if council's okay with that. That way you don't have any issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Wilbrook? You're muted.
Yeah, is this recorded or not recorded? I just don't remember.
So because we're doing it for, uh, legal advice and for negotiations, because I think there's going to be some overlap between the two and I can't distinguish between which one's which, uh, we'll record the whole executive session.
We will, okay.
Okay.
If it was just for legal advice, you typically don't do that. But because we're not going to be just getting legal advice, I, I didn't want to risk having some conversations that weren't proper for that kind of executive session. So you have to record the whole thing.
Okay. Well, Counselor, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking for a little direction here. Do you want to say we go back to public at eight fifteen or at eight thirty?
I would suggest eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, it looks like there's consensus for eight thirty. Is there anyone opposed to eight thirty? You're opposed to eight thirty, okay, so the, the plan will be that, uh, we'll be in executive session. Uh, no later, then we'll, we'll, we'll come back to, uh, to a public session at eight thirty. Uh, we may end up taking a break in that, but, uh, so, um, for everyone, uh, members of the audience who are, who are listening and participating and, and you would like to, uh, come back to the meeting, uh, will be in executive session till eight thirty. At that time, we'll rejoin and we'll pick up, um, with the unfinished public business. Okay, great, thank you. So Judy, if you would go ahead and we'll make the transition and I believe Roy is going to take.
Mayor, may I just make a comment?
Yeah, Denise?
I just want to make sure, so everybody knows, um, Dole is driving across country, but he is keeping this executive session so nobody can hear it, correct, Dole?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's public. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to leave the meeting now, so Roy, you will be the new host. So just how we've been doing it all along.
Okay, so you'll, because I'm not a co-host right now either, so you're gonna make me.
Oh, you're not?
Uh, I, on the name, it doesn't say it.
Okay, let me.
Do we want to take a five-minute break while those two get that situated?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, so I've got 6:57, let's come back at 7:02. Alright, thank you.
Okay, I'm making you host right now.
Okay, I see it now, since it's co-host, yeah.
Um, okay, and then I'm gonna go ahead and drop off.
Okay. Anything else I need to do, Judy, at all? Or just basically, it's taped anyway, right, recorded.
Right, so as soon as I, um, need to stop this now.